Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Wendy, if you would call the roll.
Paul Banks.
Here.
Pam Howard.
Here.
Lori Visder-Ward.
Here.
Barbara Cruz.
Here.
Dave Levy.
Here.
Mark Sutter.
Here.
Jeff Swante.
Here.
And Jeff, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. You would all stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands unanimous on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pam, if you would read the district mission statement, please.
The Thompson School District will be a school district that empowers, challenges, and inspires students, faculty, staff, parents, school leaders, and community members to learn, achieve, and excel.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is item 2.1, Adoption of the Agenda as Printed. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda for tonight as printed. Is there any discussion? Dave?
Yes, I just would like to mention that at our last board meeting, we said we were going to put on the agenda, the district was going to, let me take a step back. At the last meeting, we changed some board policies at our legal council's recommendation to avoid any inconsistencies. What we did was we removed from a set of our board policies supportive teachers because, again, because of the legal ramifications.
Some language around.
It was a language.
We didn't take the support out, just the language around.
That's right.
Okay.
And we said we were going to add to this agenda a proclamation supporting the teachers. Because of our late start, because of the lengthy agenda, we decided to remove that. That's fine, but I want to assure the teachers that's still our priority, and we will get to it next meeting.
Yeah, it's scheduled for February.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure that's mentioned.
Great. So we have the motion on the floor to adopt the agenda as printed. Wendy, if you'd call the roll.
Paul Banks.
Yes.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Dave Levy.
Aye.
Mark Sutter.
Aye.
Jeff Swante.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next up is item 3.1, Approval of the Minutes from the December 20th, 2017 meeting as presented. I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented from December 20th. Does anyone have any corrections or changes, additions? No. Wendy, call the roll, please.
Paul Banks.
Aye.
Pam Howard.
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward.
Aye.
Barbara Cruz.
Aye.
Dave Levy.
Aye.
Mark Sutter.
Aye.
Jeff Swante.
Aye.
Okay. The minutes for December 20th are unanimously approved. Next up is public participation. We will skip the superintendent's report. Dr. Shear's on his way back from an important meeting in Denver. If he has a report when he gets back, we'll fit him back in, so we'll push that aside for now. Next up then is item 4.2, is our board committee reports, and I'll just start down here with Dave and head this way.
Yes, I did not attend this month's Master Planning Committee. I had to be in California for a family issue, but I did hear from several people who volunteered to call me how good the meeting was, and I congratulate all the, Margaret, and everyone else, how good that meeting was. Thank you.
I'll pass.
Yeah. I attended the training for new board members for the Thompson Education Foundation, which is my new committee assignment, so I am hopefully now trained, and we have our first meeting next Tuesday for that. And, let's see, Friday this week, I head down to Denver for the CASB Legislative Resolutions Committee meeting, so I'll have more report after that.
Thank you. As Pam mentioned, we have new committee assignments this year, and so I finished up my work on Professional Concerns Committee, Calendar Committee, and Early Childhood Policy Council, so I was kind of committeeless this last month. I did pick up an opportunity to work with the Wellness Night Planning Committee, and so this year is the Third Annual Wellness Night presented by the Thompson School District and the group called Thompson Cares, which includes the social workers and the school nurses that are funded through the AWARE grant and some other grants that we have around social, emotional, learning, and mental health issues. So I'm doing a shameless plug right here for the event, which is the Third Annual Wellness Night. It will be Thursday, February 22nd, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. at the Loveland High School Cafeteria and Auditorium. It's called, their focus this year is resilience, riding the wave, and so there will be breakout talks for students, there'll be breakout talks for teachers, and there'll be breakout talks for parents and community members, as well as a keynote speaker who has not been confirmed yet. If it's who we're trying to get, it's going to be really a great opportunity here from a great educator, and I'm hoping that pans out, but I can't tell you that yet. But everybody's welcome, it's a free event, there's going to be some dinner, there's childcare, there is translation from Spanish if anybody should need that as well. Barb?
I took up my role on the Early Childhood Policy Council, so I attended my first meeting, and then I've worked, continued to work my way through visiting the schools that are in my district, so working on that.
Paul?
No report.
And Mark?
I attended the January DAC meeting and got to see presentations from principals at Loveland Classical, Ferguson High School, Van Buren, and High Plains School. One thing that I have to underscore is just how dynamic the offerings that we have in this school district are. It is so neat to see the different programs we have available, the diverse portfolio, the LISA program, the STEAM program, what we're doing, the magic that's taking place at Ferguson High School. Congratulations to Van Buren for getting to a performance improvement plan. That is a fantastic achievement, very proud of them. And Dr. Cresbell, I believe you were involved in that, so congratulations as well. I also took a tour of both of the Loveland Classical Schools campuses. Very impressive, very neat to see what they're doing out there. Ian Stout, great job, and great to meet you. And then finally, most of the members of the board here were at the LiveLoveland.org kickoff, and so if you haven't checked that out yet, please do. Get on the web, go to LiveLoveland.org. Very exciting movement, recommend that you all consider becoming a part of that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes board and committee reports. Next up is public comment, item 4.3, and Pam will read the statement, and then Dr. Banks will run the time clock.
All right. So, in board policy, BEDH, public participation at board meetings. The board wants to hear viewpoints of the public, and we need to conduct our business in an orderly and efficient manner. We schedule time during our first and third Wednesday meetings of every month for brief comments from the public. Each speaker will have three minutes. When you see the light at the podium, turn yellow, that means you have 30 seconds left, and when it turns red, you need to wrap it up. Thanks.
Good, so we have Karen Cookshousen, and then we have Addison and Jason Hott coming up next.
These are my helpers. Madam President, members of the board, I'm speaking on behalf of Stansberry staff and students tonight. I'm here to talk to you once again about school closures. As you know, it was around this time last year when we first heard during a board meeting that Stansberry was on the shortlist of schools to be closed. We were told at that time that we would know by November if our school was to be closed or not. Having come to almost all of the meetings in the fall, we quickly learned that it was not even being discussed by the board, but rather still at master plan committee meetings. We were then told that a decision would be made at the end of December, and then later we were told it would be January. Not too long ago, we heard that this decision would not be made until April. At the last meeting, Mr. Swante asked for an action item on whether or not to close any schools for next year. We are extremely disappointed to see that this is listed as a discussion item tonight. Many of us made plans to come tonight, as you can see by the audience, to hear the fate of our school. A decision, it seems, will be pushed back once again. This is beyond frustrating. I want you to look at the faces of the people who are here representing Stansberry and realize this decision affects people. We have parents who are moving out of our attendance area to locate in another school's attendance area to ensure enrollment, just in case. We have a new principal who does not know her fate. We have someone that needs to make a decision about retirement, and that deadline is coming up soon. We have teachers who are fairly new to our district, who need to know if they should be actively seeking employment elsewhere. We have, we also have classified staff that need a job and don't know if they should be looking somewhere else to ensure a steady paycheck. We already lost a fabulous staff member because of the indecision last year. Our kids are who we are most concerned about. We have kids on a daily basis asking about the fate of their beloved school, and all we can say is, "We don't know," as they sadly walk away. Even this morning, one of my students said, "Is today the day they decide about our school?" Again, I had to say, "I don't know," as he sighed and walked away. Recent research has shown that small schools help to build community and relationships with, which in turn leads to success for children. This is true for Stansberry. Many times, the teacher-to-student ratio is used to determine effectiveness and benefits. However, recent research has shown that a staff-to-student ratio is a better measure. While there are many small and large schools that do well, our parents choose to send their kids to a smaller school. In a time of open enrollment and choice for parents, why wouldn't we keep small schools as one of the options? Just like larger schools might work for some, smaller schools work for others. Parents should be able to decide this. The job of a board is to set a mission and vision for a school district, and then work in earnest to make decisions that support this vision and mission. Every decision should be measured against this. Our mission is empower to learn, challenge to achieve, and inspire to excel. If we are looking at closing schools as a means to save money, how does this support the mission that you are charged with upholding? I urge you to make a decision tonight about closing schools for next year. This is the right thing to do, we have been strung along long enough. It is unnecessary unpredictability which breeds instability. Our kids and all of us deserve better. Thank you for indulging me over my time.
My name is Addison. I am in second grade at Stansberry Elementary. I don't want my school too close because my school, I mean, because I love my teachers and I don't want to be split up from my friends. All three of my cousins and my brother went to Stansberry. My family loves the school. Thank you for listening to me.
Madam President and Board, my name is Jason Hott, and my daughter is Addison, and I have my son Cooper. He's in the fifth grade. I can't begin to tell you how perplexing this is to try to figure out what we're going to do with, with our children. My daughter is in a special needs class right now, and she's getting all the help that she could possibly get to be able to get caught up into, into the third grade. And right now, all that's holding, keeping us together for, to help Addison, are the teachers at Stansberry. They have done a wonderful job, especially Karen Cookshousen. I can't say enough about her. So, to find out that we're going to have to wait longer to try to figure out what I'm going to do with my kids, it's unbelievable. And I think that one of the things that you need to understand is, I had three of my nephews go to Stansberry. One of them is a sophomore at CSU, one of them is a freshman at the University of Iowa, and one of them is going to be a sophomore at Mountain View. That's what I always saw from Stansberry was preparing those kids for what they could do, and what they would be able to be, what they'd be able to achieve. Well, that all started at Stansberry. One of the things that you say in the mission statement is that the Thompson School District will be a school district that empowers, challenges, and inspires students. The way that you inspire students is to give them some stability. The way that you empower the teachers is to let them know what's going on. This has been put off for far too long. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We have Shawn Rutledge, and then Robin.
Members of the board, I am Gary Lindquist. I've been a resident of Loveland for close to 60 years. I went through the schools here, and.
Excuse me for a second, sir. Could you state your name and your address, please?
Gary Lindquist, at 833 West 10th.
Okay, and we don't have him on the list. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and let you speak. We didn't have you signed up, but I wanted to get your name in the record, so we'll go ahead and give you your three minutes.
All right. I want to know how many, by a show of hands, of this panel is aware of how the TIF program works with the tax rebates that are allowed to developers in this city? None of you, apparently.
I don't think you're, well, you're not going to get a discussion from us about it, so continue.
We're not allowed to respond.
I see that the press releases that are addressing the school closures state that the school district is short of money, and that's the cause of these school closures. The cause of the shortage of money is because this panel, none of you, have gone into the city council when they're granting these awards to these developers, because they will not grant these awards to the developers if the school district objects and refuses to go ahead and waiver the money that is due to them. And I think it's high time you did it before you talk anymore about closing schools. That amounts to over $30 million in this city, and that would more than cover the costs of the schools that you're declaring that you can't afford the operation and maintenance on.
We have Amanda and Shawn Rutledge, followed by Robin Crowley.
Good evening, board, and thank you for allowing us to come to talk about the late start. My name is Shawn Rutledge from 3918 Crestone Drive, and I'm accompanied by my daughter, Amanda Rutledge, who is a seventh grader at Walt Clark Junior High School, and one of the many individuals that will be affected by the change in scheduling which the board is considering. I'm also here sort of somewhat personally to seek some level of public vindication for, from the board, for being accused of being tardy for so many years, the first period. I think that I probably missed about half of the first period for at least most of my senior and part of my junior year. And what the recent science that has come out has shown is, is that we were basically acting naturally. We felt sleepy because we were sleepy. And I think that it's really prudent for us to observe the sort of basic physiological features of ourselves and say, "Hey, this is what it is that we have to do, and this is what it is that we have to, here's an appropriate way to respond to it." I think more generally, this sets out a lesson to the kids, and the lesson goes, hey, look, we've done things for a lot of years in a certain way. And evidence has come out and shown that the way we've been doing things is wrong and could be done better if we just simply adjusted something. And I think what we should do, and what's incumbent upon us as adults, is to respond to that with some sort of action, because that's what educated people do, and that is, after all, what the school board is trying to produce. So I very strongly consider the board to consider the late start in the name and interest of the kids, in the name of interest of science. And I think my daughter would like to say something.
I know I learn better when I'm awake, so, thank you.
We have Robin Crowley, followed by Isaac Herrera.
Hi, my name is Robin Crowley. I live at 603 Sunwood, in the Stansberry boundaries. Madam President, members of the board, thank you very much for letting us all have an opportunity to speak. As a community member, I'm very, very frustrated right now. From previous speakers, you know that we all care very deeply about our children's education. We need to be able to plan what is best for our children. You told us it would be a decision in December, and now it's not until March or April. In an effort to plan for my children, one that's going to be in kindergarten next year, and I have a second grader who will be in third grade, I looked into open enrollment before the December 21st deadline. When I called with questions about that, wondering, hey, if they keep Stansberry open, could I cancel my open enrollment, I was told that there would be no way to close Stansberry next year. Further, or, and this would be mostly because of bus routes and whatnot, as well as, not only was it, there was even a proposal to make Monroe a K through two and a Mary Blair a three through five. This would put my kindergartner and a third grader at two separate schools. Further, do the families at those two schools know that this is a possibility for their children to be split up and divided, besides the obvious changes in class sizes? I understand that the budget issues facing Thompson are because the Loveland taxpayers failed to support our schools in the 2016 elections, but closing two schools is not going to solve the budget shortfall. I was told that boundaries for schools could not be changed to increase our enrollment because of bus routes, but if you close schools, you're going to have to change bus routes. Why not change them to keep good schools open? Stansberry is a great school. Or better yet, give the community another chance to pass a bond, and provide the information that if it doesn't pass, that schools will close. Thank you for letting me speak, and please make this decision.
Isaac Herrera, followed by Andy Christman.
Hi. Hi, my name is Isaac, and I'm in third grade. I love Stansberry because it's my home school, and I've been there since kindergarten. I've learned so much at Stansberry. I really don't want it to close down because I know a lot of friends there, and I love all of the teachers at Stansberry, so please don't close my favorite school down.
So we have Andy Christman, followed by Janine Mashawn.
President, ward members of the Board of Education, my name is Andy Christman, 1609 Cleveland Avenue in Loveland. I'm excited this evening about the proposed approval of the Recruit and Retain Committee's recommendations. I believe working to improve our onboarding program and providing tuition reimbursement to employees in particular can show current and potential educators that Thompson values having a high-quality teacher in every classroom, and that Thompson will support them at every step of the way to become that teacher, with our time and the district's money. I'm also pleased about the collaboration that this represents between the board and teachers and the administration. I'm also excited about the recommended calendar for 2018-2019. Thompson has long had a collaborative culture. This calendar creates a schedule where teachers can regularly collaborate to make school and classroom decisions that ensure student success, and where teachers have access to the mentoring and support they need. Again, this is a result of intentional collaboration between the association administrators and community members, and I'm very excited about the new business item you have, the action item you have before you tonight on the calendar. I'm equally excited and concerned about the proposed change in start times. On the one hand, if we're really serious about every child's future, we need to get serious about doing what works, and the science suggests we're doing the right thing by flipping start times. I would caution you, however, against limiting the ability of kids to participate in before-school or zero-hour activities. We need to inspire creativity and a love of learning by offering a rich, varied extracurricular program that educates the whole child. Many elementary and secondary schools currently offer before-school activities like open gym, jazz band, spelling bee, and more. I believe that requiring all students' activities, secondary student activities, to be after school would limit the ability of athletes to be more well-rounded students. I also wonder what academic supports, this is an aside, more, in a way of an assignment, I also wonder what more academic supports we may need to offer our student athletes who may miss more instructional time due to this change. Finally, I would like to briefly address the issue of school closures. I believe that any decision to close schools should only be made after multiple public forums. The decision should be accompanied with a detailed plan for the success of those students displaced by the closure. For example, there was talk before the last bond of updating Garfield Elementary and combining Truskin and Garfield. That would have been a win-win. The kids would have gotten a new, better, newer, better resource building, and the district saves money in the long run by becoming more efficient. I don't believe that at this time, the district has held enough public forums or planned sufficiently for the success of displaced students to close schools at this time. Thank you for your time.
We have Crystal Gates coming up next.
My name is Janine Mashawn. I live at 1100 West Shore Place in Loveland. I was the president of SAC at Thompson Valley High School for five years, part of the Master Plan Committee at its onset. Could not see it through due to my own business issues. I'd like to speak about two items tonight, the late start item and the school closure. My shortest comments are on the late start. I think people have talked about all of the biological studies that show that kids, when they get to later middle school, high school years, aren't not trying to get out of bed, but biologically just sort of can't. I understand the issues of, you know, raising the children to being productive members of society. My children are 18 months apart, both in high school at the same time, and I did lots of kicking to get them out of bed. At the end of the day, the job market now doesn't demand that people be out of bed at 7:30 in the morning, it really depends on your job. If you're a farmer, you've got to be out of bed at 5:00. If you're a knowledge worker, you've got to be out of bed when India and Asia wakes up. So I don't think that trying to fight against the biological clock of our children is in the own best interest of our children. To the comment of, "I learn better when I'm awake," seems to me to sum it up. On the school closures item, that's also on your agenda, I think the community spoke on this item when they did not vote for additional mill levies or additional taxes, and I find it as well frustrating to the teachers and the other students that the motion hasn't been made and action hasn't been taken. From an industry perspective and my background, I mean, consolidation is the key toward reducing costs in a system, and also, at the same time, optimizing your resources. And in this environment, your resources are your admin, your teachers, your students, your bus routes, all those things that need to be optimized, you know, with a lesser base of cost. Tabor's not going anywhere, the negative factor's not going anywhere. I mean, the discussion right now that's rolling around in the Senate and the legislature at the state is how to find more money for transportation and road repair, it's not how to find more money for education. So to think that we're going to get more money somehow isn't going to happen, and I think that the, the community wants the board to do the best with the money that it has, and I don't know how you do that without closing the schools and consolidating them in a more effective manner to deliver education to the standard that the community deserves.
Good evening, Madam President and Board members. My name is Crystal Gates, and I live at 1041 Sablewood Drive here in Loveland, and this is my daughter Nina. She just has, you want to say a statement or two? No? Okay, I'll speak for her then. Stansberry School is one of the best schools in our district, and I would bet to say it has one of the highest satisfaction ratings as well. While I have no scientific evidence to support this, I still believe it to be true, and I'm sure that a lot of the people here feel this way as well. Our family has had so much pride in Stansberry since our daughter's first day of kindergarten almost three years ago. We chose Stansberry specifically for her instead of the school zone in our neighborhood because we knew someone who worked there as a teacher's aide, and she said the principal, and the program there was great, and that Nina would do wonderful there, and it's true. She's excelled there. Every single one of her teachers has been so great with recognizing her potential and helping her to work towards it, and also give her the challenges she needs. Another family in my neighborhood, which is north of 57th Street, has also opted out of their neighborhood school and has sent their son to Stansberry, and I know that he also has been thriving there while he was struggling at his previous school. I understand some of the logistics that you're dealing with that have created this I understand some of the logistics that you're dealing with that have created this situation, and I understand that it's a very difficult decision. I just hope that you understand how important and special Stansbury is for our district and our community. Closing our school and/or other schools isn't going to resolve the core problem. It would only be a Band-Aid, I feel. There is hopefully a better long-term solution such as rezoning, changing bus routes, or pushing for another vote on a mill levy or bond issue, now that the community has a better understanding of how much we need those items. I understand that Stansbury is on the chopping block because of a lower enrollment, but like I said earlier, the teachers, parents, and students enrolled there are fully invested and have so much pride in Stansbury, and we should try to capitalize on that instead of dividing it. Thank you for your time.
That was our final speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public participation.
Madam President?
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of people here with a lot of children. Is it consistent with our rules that, can we change the order of the agenda and jump to discussion on closing the schools?
We can certainly take a vote on that if you like, but I would like to also caution you that the action items are also here and have people here to speak to them as well. We could move, we could move the potential school closures up earlier in the agenda. However...
I leave it to you to make your judgment.
Well, no, if you guys, if you guys want to move it, I'm willing to entertain a motion to adjust the agenda at this point, but that's what it would take.
I would make the motion to make the closing of schools the next agenda item.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded then to adjust the agenda to move item, discussion item 7.3, right now, after public participation?
I think so, yes. Yes.
I'm reluctant, well, go ahead. Go ahead. Right? Okay, we can go ahead and do it.
We have a lot of people here and a lot of children.
We can go ahead and put it up to, ahead of item five, and then I will open it to discussion. Okay? So it's been moved and seconded, and I will now open it to discussion. My concern right now is Dr. Shear is not here. And I would really hate to not have our main point of, our main resource to answer any questions we might have not be in the room. He is on his way back from Denver. I'm willing to have it be a floating item if you want, if you guys want to vote, to move it when he gets back, but I'd just like to point that out.
I think that's a good point.
Anybody else have any, any issue, any discussion around it? So do we want to then? I'm trying to think of how to do this. Do we want to make it? Do you want to?
Let, let...
amend your motion?
Go ahead.
A little unorthodox question here, maybe ask, is there anybody on this board that is in favor of closing the school this fall? Might shortcut a lot of this.
Well, I'm not willing to vote without discussion, and I'm not willing to vote without getting some information.
Well, I'm not asking to vote. I'm just asking, is there anybody in favor at this point of closing the schools this fall?
I'm not willing to make that decision without hearing from staff with some further information. I have a ton of questions that I'd like to ask as part of the discussion item. I'm going to need to hear some more.
I think that is part of the discussion.
I'd like to amend my motion that if we wait for Dr. Shear, and if 8 o'clock comes and he's not here, we proceed.
Okay.
That would be my motion.
Okay. Are we okay with that? Then amend that motion to that. So we will move it to, as soon as Dr. Shear gets here or 8 o'clock, whichever comes sooner.
Yes. That's fine.
Are we good? All right. Wendy, do you want to call the roll on that?
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes unanimously. So we will continue with the agenda as it stands, and then we will jump in with the school closure item when Dr. Shear appears. So next up then is item 5.1, which is approval of personnel extra-duty coaching recommendations, the only item on the consent agenda. So I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, unless anybody wants to pull it. It's one item, okay?
So moved.
Okay. And a second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the personnel extra-duty coaching recommendations as presented in the consent items. Is there any questions? Wendy, if you'd call the roll on that, please.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
All right, the consent item passes unanimously. That takes us to action item 6.1. I believe that's Dr. Crespo, and she just stepped out. Gordon, can you? Maybe. Or Skip, can you, can you fill in? Okay. So item 6.1, approval of a right-of-way quitclaim with the town of Berthad.
Evening, Madam President, members of the boards. Skip Barmatowski, Planning Manager. This is basically a housekeeping item. In 1980, we constructed Spartan Avenue in Berthad as part of our development responsibilities in building Berthad High from 5th Street to County Road 17. At some point, all of that land that we acquired was supposedly dedicated to the town of Berthad as right-of-way. It's shown that way on several plats. However, the county still shows us as owning it. And as there is now development in the area, Town of Berthad has asked that we would go ahead and just clear everything up by quitclaiming a 10-foot by 1,293-foot strip of land on the south side of Spartan Avenue that I believe you've got pictures of.
Questions for Skip? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the quitclaim of the right-of-way to the town of Berthad.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the right-of-way quitclaim to the town of Berthad. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Wendy, if you would call the roll, please.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item 6.2, approval of the recommendations. Item 6.2 and 6.3 are essentially identical except for the school year, the calendar year, or the fiscal year that they reflect. So item 6.2 is approval of the recommendations from the Recruit and Retain Task Force for This has been presented to us several times. None of this is new information, and I will entertain a motion to approve this, and then we can, if there's any discussion, once we have the motion, we can go there.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendations from the Recruit and Retain Task Force for 2017-2018. Is there any discussion?
Paul?
I think I might be in a minority here. First, I'd just like to say I appreciate what the committee has put together. I think, given the charge you had, you put some strong recommendations together, but at this point, I'm still struggling to kind of support this. As I was considering this, I was thinking, I still need to wrap my head around where our district's going over the next two, three, or five years, and what are our goals, what are our priorities, what do we need to be spending our money on? You know, I know that we're looking to approve, dispense, not a whole lot of money, but additional money on this item, when, in just about 15, 20 minutes, we're going to be talking about how we need to tighten our belts, and we don't have enough money to do things, and we need to close schools. I don't have my mind wrapped around, you know, some other needs we have. Should we be spending this additional money that we found in the budget on mental health issues? Should we be spending it on technology? Is there PD issues that we need to be doing? There are just so many competing things for money right now that, that I don't feel up to speed and informed about, that I can make a prudent decision on this. So it has nothing to do with the bad recommendations, or that I'm not trying to support teachers. I'm just not sure we know, at least I don't know, our main priorities and what we should be spending our money on. Until I can wrap my head around that, I don't want to be adding anything extra to the budget.
Anybody else? My understanding, and Gordon, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that this is actually within the budget, correct? This money is within the budget somewhere. Yeah, go ahead.
Madam President, members of the board, I'm Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for the district. I would say that the typical pattern that we've experienced in the budget over the last number of years is that it's an outperformance of the budget, whatever the adopted budget is. We typically have better performance than that. So in that sense, I would say, yes, it is, it could be covered in this year's budget. Is it a specific line item that was allowed for initially? No, it was not, but I think there would be room in the budget to absorb such an expenditure for this year.
So in theory, though, it could be allocated to anything or carried over.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Dave?
Just have a question. When does this new schedule go into effect? Next year?
The recruit and retain items?
No, the, yes, but the one-hour late start on Wednesdays, that goes in...
That would be next calendar year.
Yeah, next calendar, of course. Okay.
So 18-19?
Yeah. Thank you. It's a good year, 18-19.
Anybody else? Okay, Wendy, if you want to call the roll on that, please.
Paul Banks?
No.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
All right, that, item 6.1, 6.2, I'm sorry, passes by a margin of 6 to 1. Item 6.3 is essentially the same information, approval of recommendations from the Recruit and Retain Task Force for the 2018-19 school year, which, let me pull it up here, will be for an entire budget year.
And that's the one in which we have the late start?
That would be the year in which, correct, that we have, if that passes today, that would be the year that that new calendar takes. So it includes all of the items, I think the additional item being the mentorship program, is that the, Dr. Sebers, is that the one that's not in this year that's in next year? So item number three, no, item number two, recruitment of new employees, expand current mentor program, correct? So that's new for 18-19. Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that, and then we can go from there. So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendations from the Recruit and Retain Task Force for 2018-2019. And discussion? Questions, comments? All right, Wendy, if you'd call the roll, please.
Paul Banks?
No.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Jeff Swan, oh, sorry, Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
All right, that one passes with a margin of 6 to 1 as well. Next item up is item 6.4, is approval of school start times. And that is... Should we read the proposed start times? Yeah, go ahead and read them out. I was pulling it up. So 2018-2019 start times would be moved to elementary school students beginning their school day at 8:00 a.m. and ending at 3:10 p.m. High school students would begin their school day at 8:30 a.m. and end at 3:50 p.m. Middle school students would begin their school day at 8:45 a.m. and end at 4:00 p.m. And so just, we have also in our board packet about the, the other districts that have already moved to this, and the, you know, Dr. Sebers, I think you talked to some of them in addition to the last meeting we had, is that correct? Okay.
Madam President, School Board, Dr. Shear. Bill Sebers, Chief Human Resources Officer of this amazing district. Yes, so the last time I spoke to you, we had an opportunity to reach out to Cherry Creek and talk to them about their best, bell schedule and the changes and the barriers. And what we did was, we drafted proposals from conversations we had with them and how that could work in our district with transportation.
So I'm going to entertain a motion on this one as well to approve, and then if there's any discussion, we can go with that. It's been presented, we've had discussion around this on October 4th, November 15th, and December 20th meetings, so this will be our fourth time to hear this. So a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the new school start times as presented in the document here and as Pam read out. Questions, discussion? Barb, and then Paul.
I guess my question about it is, for the elementary, moving them to an earlier start time, is, would we assume that if they start at 8:10 or 8:15 right now at their school, they're going to start at 7:15? I mean, when we're talking a total switch of time, I know it says 8 o'clock start time, but how are they going to make that adjustment? I think if the elementary schools knew exactly what their time would be, it would be a clearer picture for them, is all. Does that make sense to you, Bill, at all, my question?
Not exactly.
No, okay.
And the reason why is the start time would be 8 o'clock, so talking to Cherry Creek...
Everybody would start at 8 o'clock? All elementaries?
All, all elementaries. And just note, depending where the board's at with this item, you know, if it was approved, then there's some work that we would need to do. We would need to create an implementation task force to talk about this and talk to elementary schools, middle schools, high schools, and kind of move forward there. But this is an idea of where, where these times would work as far as transportation.
Okay, I think that's what was confusing me, knowing that elementary had such a staggered start right now, that I was assuming that that would still be the, okay, thank you. Clarified.
You're quite welcome.
Paul?
I just had one real, might not have been that relevant, but I just noticed that we're reducing the number of instructional minutes per day at the high school. I was wondering why it worked out that way, or any particular reason?
Yeah, so, so talking to Cherry Creek, there's always flexibility with the amount of time. This right now, the time, even though we reduce it, because over the years, we add it to it, there's still six days of flexibility outside of what's required. So looking at Cherry Creek, Cherry Creek increased their elementary time and decreased their secondary time because of the transportation part, and giving flexibility on, you know, getting students on time as far as traffic routes and things like that, and the transportation of the students. So, so what this would look like on the current amount of time, it would be increasing our elementary times by eight minutes, and then decreasing high school by eight minutes, I believe, and middle school by seven minutes, and we're still in compliance with the attendance law.
And then Mark?
In, in early December, Barbara and I were fortunate enough to attend a breakout session at the Casby Convention, statewide convention that actually covered this. And one thing that really struck me was the focus of that convention, of that particular breakout session. And so what I want to do is, I want to just make sure that we've got our eye on the ball here, right? You know, the changing of the hours, bell start times, moving that later into the day, that's step one, but that's not the focus, right? The focus is to make sure that our students get the American Association of Pediatricians' recommended daily allowance of sleep, and so that our school schedules have that amount of time built into them to make sure that those kids are getting an opportunity, at least, to get enough sleep for their age group. You look at middle school, you look at high school, and how they grow differently, middle school in particular is where that focus was. And so I just want to make sure we keep our eye on the ball and realize this is step one, and that we have other steps that we also need to take when we're moving down this path to make sure that we're successful.
All right, I'm ready to call for a vote. Wendy, if you would call the roll on this, please.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visder-Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
No.
All right, that passes with a 6-1 vote as well. Thank you. Dr. Shear has now returned, so we will move to item, let's see, it won't be seven point three now, it will be, I guess it'll be seven point one, I don't know what you want to call it, Wendy, but just make that proper notation. It is still a discussion item at this point, so we will move to discussion item seven point one, which is now 2018-2019 potential school closures. If you had a chance to catch your breath, Dr. Shear, I didn't, I didn't want to move into this item without you being here.
I apologize. We've had a very long day with settlement hearings.
Yeah, I realize that.
Okay.
He was talking with lawyers all day, so. So just, you know, you all aware, are aware of the history of how this has come up as a discussion item. I would like to point out that we've kind of been talking about this in a vacuum. We've been talking about, should we close schools or should we not close schools? Should we close them now? Should we close them later? Which one should we close? And we haven't really talked about all of the other, I guess, all of the other ripple effects or all of the other things that go around. We haven't talked about what kind of money we would be looking at to save in the budget. We haven't looked at to whether that's a one-time or an ongoing. And so I'd like to open up the discussion and just kind of go from there. Dr. Sebers, Dr. Crespo, and Gordon Jones are here to answer questions in their respective areas as well as Dr. Shear. So I would encourage us to make use of them with our questions. And Dave, I guess, I'll take you first.
Thank you, Madam President.
Oh, and before you start, I'm going to go ahead and kind of do this as a, give everybody a chance to speak once through. Then we can go ahead and speak once through again to make sure everybody gets heard and gets equal time.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the public for coming. It's not the first time they came. I think they expressed themselves very succinctly, politely, and clearly. And I think a couple of very good points they made was, hey, if you're going to make a decision, don't keep us in limbo. And we have a very special school. I think that first one, don't keep us in limbo, we need to include in all of our thoughts how we go forward. I think that's a very valid point they make. My thoughts were, are, and I've been thinking about this quite a bit, is this. We have a five million dollar deficit in our budget. We could, we are drawing down our reserves to pay for that. We could do that this year and next year, and then we'll be out of money. My personal, my thoughts are, and we're considering closing schools to help resolve that budget. First thing I think it has to be understood, we have to close the budget. We're not allowed by law to do anything else if we don't have the reserve. So we have to close the budget. I think before I would want to vote on closing any school, I would want to see how we're closing the entire budget deficit. We shouldn't take this piece here and this piece there and not know if later on some other idea is going to impact the previous ones. So my, so the thought I may, I have is that, one, we should not vote on anything until we see a complete package. Number two, I'm leaning to thinking we should not, we should make a statement tonight, today, that we're not going to close any schools in the eighteen, nineteen calendar. Because, one, we have to see the whole proposal, and, two, it's not fair. It might close after that, that might not make some people happy. Some people might say, let me know now instead of next year, but, or at the end of this year. But I think we should also consider making a commitment that we don't, that make a commitment tonight, we're not going to close the schools next year. Thank you. Those are my thoughts.
Jeff? I'll just go down the line here. Jeff?
I couldn't agree more with what Dave has said. I could probably go on for hours here. I know we don't have that type of time. Number one, I don't even understand, and maybe I haven't been listening good, why we picked Stansberry and Van Buren. I know we have low attendance there, but I am a big believer in neighborhood schools. And I'm not sure we've done everything we can to support these schools and do everything we can to win back students. We have a lot of students that have choice out there. I'd like to see more support given to these schools. I'd like to have conversations about what we can do to make them successful before we start having conversations about closing the schools. We told them, as already has been said, we were going to make decisions in November and December. It hasn't happened. I don't think we can kick the can down the road any further. There are so many unanswered questions at this point that I feel would be irresponsible on our parts to even have a conversation about closing these schools next fall.
Pam?
Well, this is really the least fun part of being on school board, quite frankly, to be in this kind of fiscal situation where we're five million dollars in the hole every single year, and I can't, we can't sustain that, obviously. I would really like to see the numbers of how much the cost savings would be for closing schools. You know, one of our, our top responsibilities being on a school board is that financial stewardship of the taxpayer money. And if we're going to save a million dollars by closing several schools, that may be where we have to go. We have sixteen thousand students in this district, and we have to make the best decisions for the majority of the students. That's the bottom line. So I guess I would really like to dig into some numbers on what the savings would be for, for school closures. I'd also like to hear what the master plan committee, and I'm not sure what their timeline is, but we did, I know, ask them at one point to look into this. Is that correct?
Well, we extended their delivery date to March.
To March, okay.
And it's, 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 the master, the charge of the master plan committee is, with the growth coming, what are we going to do to provide for those students with or without a bond? Because we don't know if we're going to ever get a bond pass.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, the fact is, this community hasn't supported a levy or a bond for thirteen years. And that's, you know, we're sitting up here, the seven of us, having to deal with the fact that the community has not voted to support the sixteen thousand students in the best manner possible. So we are now tasked with this balancing act. And, you know, I just, I'm still gathering that information and, whoops, just need some more, some more numbers.
Gordon, are you able to provide us some numbers tonight? Are you willing to talk about some potential numbers?
Didn't mean to put you on the spot, Gordon.
No, I did.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Shear, I'm Gordon Jones, Chief Financial Officer for the district. While I can offer some high-level comments, I will say that in-depth analysis has not been done at any one particular school. From a high level, I have looked at some of the figures that are available. As we all know, the largest portion of the budget is, is associated with salaries and benefits. Eighty-five percent, if not more, of the budget across the entire district is associated with that. When looking at any one particular school, and it wouldn't matter the size or the scope of that school, the programs that are available, may affect it a little bit if there's different programs that are in one school and not another. But chances are that those programs could possibly be relocated to another school as well. So that comes out of the equation a bit. The staffing, the staffing situation becomes the most complicated factor to consider when looking at school closures, in my opinion. Excuse me. There's a variety of factors that are associated with that. Not the least of which is if a decision were to be made to close any one particular school, where those students would go. Would they go to the closest school in the district to the building that's being considered? Would they choice to another school within the district that's further away? Would they choice out of the district? A variety of different things that really makes it difficult to forecast what that might look like until it actually does take place. So there, it's tough to make analysis there because where the students go affects the financing or the staffing for a particular building. So, for instance, we have ratios that we use when building the budget of how many students are, are in a grade level at a particular school, how, what the ratios are to how, how that should be staffed from a teacher perspective to a grant perspective, from title funding, if that were to be the case, to specials, to special ed, a variety of different factors that come into play there. One of the reasons that, one of the rationale to look at smaller schools is the dispersment of those students and the families that would be impacted by any such closure would be a smaller impact, there are smaller class sizes typically, and those students would be better absorbed or more easily absorbed into existing buildings within the district. That is a key consideration for, from a size standpoint or an enrollment standpoint for a particular school. If there is only one round, meaning one class for each grade, those students could be absorbed within the existing buildings and not necessarily require the staff to follow those students. Let me be very clear, that's not to say that those staff would be adversely affected in an employment standpoint. Obviously, if a school was closed, they wouldn't be at that school, but they could be at another school. I would defer to Dr. Sebers from an HR standpoint on the staffing solutions that would be in place there. But we have, from retirements and professionals that leave the district, we have openings that are more than enough typically to accommodate the teachers that would be impacted or the staff that would be impacted typically at those buildings. So that's certainly a consideration. There's other costs associated with the building beyond salaries and benefits. Most notably is the putting deferred maintenance aside for the time being. But there are utility costs at each of the buildings, which are a factor in any building that we have. Typically, it's determined, the higher the square footage, the higher the utility costs. Although, as we've seen with High Plains, our newest school that we have in the district has some of the lowest utility costs in the district as well because it has the most efficient systems, the newer technology that allows that building to be more efficient. So while I've touched on a variety of topics here, there hasn't been in-depth analysis done for any one particular school. I would say, from a high level, I would feel confident that, conservatively speaking, there is a half a million dollars' worth of savings at any one particular school across the district. Some schools, more than that, but I wouldn't foresee a case where there would be less than, than that type of savings for any one individual school.
Thanks. This is, this is an emotional issue, and I understand that. And much of the testimony that we've heard from parents and teachers and children over the months that we've been talking, over the year that we've been talking about this, maybe a year plus, has been emotional. And I understand that. Everybody loves their teacher. Everybody loves their school. That said, our job is to make decisions based on the facts that we have before us. And so I'm going to put out some numbers here. I've been looking at some numbers. Van Buren currently sits at a hundred and twenty-nine enrolled students. That enrollment has dropped since 2010, at a maximum in 2010 of two hundred and twelve students. It's gone steadily downhill since then. Stansberry in 2010 was at two hundred and forty-three students. And currently sits, as of the most recent report, which is on the website, you can all look at that on the website, a hundred and sixty-nine students. Those are some hard numbers. Those are some hard facts. This isn't an easy decision. I doubt it would be an easier decision to make next year or the year after that. So whether we make that decision tonight, six months from now, a year from now, a year and a half from now, emotionally, it's not going to be any easier for any of us. Another thing that I look at when I'm making these decisions is we've got schools with thirty kids in their classes, elementary schools with upwards of twenty-five, thirty, thirty-two kids in their elementary school classes. It's very hard for me to justify asking those families to have crowded classes where in some of our smaller schools, and my children experience that as well, where you've got seventeen, eighteen, twenty kids in a class. And that's terrific if you're one of those eighteen or twenty kids. It is, it is great. It is a small family feel. But then what's my answer to the family who says, there's thirty kids in my kid's second grade class? How do I answer that question? Now, the other problem that we run into with small classes, or with small schools, is the inability to run two rounds. Where if you only have twenty-seven second graders, you get, you get twenty-seven. You can't split that into two classes because it's just too small. So those are some of the numbers I looked at. Gordon mentioned that we can save half a million dollars immediately per school closure. There are other schools that are small as well that I think we'll be needing to look at in the future. This issue is not new in this school district. I've lived in Loveland for over thirty years, and for over thirty years, this school district has been talking about closing schools. I don't enjoy saying these things. I don't enjoy being the bad guy and saying that we need to do this. But I feel very strongly that this district has come to a point in our financial situation where we can no longer continue to operate this way. We need to look at every possible means of efficiency, and consolidating schools is one of the, one of the most efficient things we can do at this point. And I think, the other thing is that Gordon mentioned, and Dr. Sebers, I think if I'm wrong, correct me, but there's, there was some concern stated about what will happen to the teachers. And yes, while those teachers may no longer be teaching at Stansberry or Van Buren or whatever other school, there is turnover enough in the district, and there are still kids enough in the district that there would be spots available, for the most part, somewhere for those people. Given, given retirements, given people moving out, that kind of thing. So that's kind of where I am on this. I don't think this decision is going to get any easier than it is right tonight. Barb, you're up.
I've been in Loveland for forty-five years, and when I started working in Loveland, there were nine elementary schools. And during that time, now look at the number there are now, twenty-one or twenty-two, twenty-one. There were three high schools and four middle schools, and so it's changed. And we've never been faced with truly looking at a decision like that over, like this, over all these years that we've had to really think about actually closing. There's no procedure in place. We don't know how to go about doing it, it's reality. We, we've built these schools for community, and they've been thriving on their communities for the most part. Now it's talk of taking those communities away or dispersing them into other schools, and that's really difficult as well. I think that we need to come up as a board with some, some kind of policy or procedure to move forward versus just saying we're going to do it right now. I think in the long run, it's going to have to happen, but I don't think we can comfortably do it right now.
I'll try not to repeat everything that you guys have said, but yeah, never an easy decision. You know, having been executive director of elementary education for six years and spending a lot of time in our elementary buildings and seeing all the wonderful work that happens there and the children and the interactions, they're very magical places, so the thought of losing any of those is a tough decision. I would say at this point in time, as of right now, I would, I would agree the district needs to be closing some schools. But that's a soft decision because I thought I might be the only one that didn't have the information. But to be honest, I have not seen the analogues yet. I don't know exactly what the costs are going to be. I don't know the impact for the teachers or the students. I mean, there's so many questions that I just haven't seen it yet. So I'm not even sure I can even have a discussion or how we can have a discussion until we see that more in-depth analysis that hasn't happened yet. So my gut tells me we need to get more efficient, not only for economic reasons, you know, I know that there's educational reasons that small schools are tough, whether it's specials or combination classes or all the different things that affect the education of the kids. I think at some point we need to get efficient. I don't have the full information to do that yet, which is partly why I'm, as of now, would not encourage and not want to have a vote in closing any schools this year. We made some comments and promises to, to community and parents that this decision would already be made, and we've let that slip by. I don't think we should rush into this decision. So at some point in time, I think we're going to have to make the tough decision, but I don't think it should be now or need to be now. We have a lot more work to do.
Mark?
Well, first of all, I would like to say thank you to the rest of my board members. I feel like every single one of you contributed unique thoughts and perspectives to this very difficult problem. And so I'm going to do my best to try and add a little bit more perspective. Certainly, I understand this issue from a parent perspective. I have two wonderful children at Mary Blarin Con Ball. The thought of a school closing, uh, no words. No words can express it. And so ever since I started on this board in October, I've been looking at this issue. I've been digging as deep as I can, trying to take my business experience and apply it to solve this problem. And what I've found is, first of all, it's incredibly complex. Every time I find an answer to a question, I find five more questions. When it comes to trying to find more efficiencies, you know, what I see, when I look at the Thompson District, School District, from a business perspective, is that we have been trying to do that- is that we have been trying to do that for a decade, ever since the economic downturn. And we've got incredibly talented people in this district that have worked this problem over and over, backwards and forwards. So when we talk about finding more efficiencies, it's a lot like trying to trim the fat and we're cutting into the bone. When I look at a growth model from a business perspective, right, we need to understand that the decisions we make at the district level have implications far beyond just trying to balance the budget, right? We're setting a course that this district is going to go on. Are we closing schools and buckling down to try to continue to streamline efficiency when we've been on that course for a decade, continuously trying to streamline resources? Or are we looking at the inconvenient truth that our community is growing whether we want it to or not? And we've got to have the schools available in the right place to take care of that growth, to handle that growth? It's an incredibly difficult decision. We have to be financially responsible. We've got to be prepared for that growth.
Dave, anybody else?
You're going to go through a second round?
Uh-huh. If anybody else has anything to say.
At the end of the second round, I would like to make the motion. Everybody speak. But my motion will be, we vote tonight that we're not going to close any school starting... Let me rephrase that. Next year, all schools will be open. And that, two, that I would ask the superintendent and staff to submit to us at the next board meeting, a calendar of when they are going to be able to submit to us, piece by piece, the entire plan to find $5 million in savings. Because if we close four schools, that's $2 million in savings. And we still need more than that. We still need $3 million more. So I think the problem is very large. I think we have the issue of growth coming in. But when will we see it? Will they choice out? All those complex issues you had mentioned. So my thoughts are a motion for those two items. But I'd like to everybody's discussion first, before I say, make that motion.
We need to, just to clarify, we would need to move it to an action item, and then a vote.
Sure.
Okay.
I'll try and keep it short. And Mark, thanks for your comments. This is extremely complex. The dilemma here is, we're talking about growth down the road. And maybe students aren't in the right places, or the schools aren't in the right places. But where we're at right now is 78% on occupancy. We've got 22% of our seats that aren't occupied by a student right now. So I understand the economy of efficiencies that we're talking about. Maybe it makes sense to close some schools in the fall of 2019. But on the other hand, we keep talking about growth. And there's going to be more students here. Well, do we want to close a school like Stansbury, just to reopen it later? Or are we talking about permanently closing it? I think we have to have some deep, in-depth conversations. We need to talk about mill levies. We need to talk about bonds. And when I think bonds, I'm not thinking about building new schools. I'm thinking of making the most out of what we have, especially with 22% on occupancy.
Okay. Well, I think any decision that we come to has to be, number one, based on facts, the numbers, and number two, on balance. And what is the best thing for the majority of the students in the district? And what is the least harmful way to start saving, you know, cutting the budget? And, you know, I served on the budget proposal team back during the recession, and we slashed. Mark, you're right when you did the research. I mean, we've cut so many central administration positions that we've never been able to bring back. And that is very harmful, quite frankly, to the students because their teachers are now tasked with all of these duties that administrators used to do. So, you know, we have cut as much as we can cut at this point. So, I mean, what's the next, you know, the other alternative? Do we stop busing? You know, we could save millions of dollars by not providing busing, or, you know, increasing class sizes. But those things aren't very tempting right now. So I guess, at this point, to me, closing schools is the most logical due to economy of scale. I'm willing to consider the closures for 2019. But I think we're going to, you know, we are rapidly approaching that point where there's nowhere else, and that is the least harmful way, so.
2019.
1920.
1920. I'm reluctant to move ahead with a vote tonight. And, you know, of course, it's the will of the board, whatever. But personally, I'm reluctant to vote because we've not heard the full report from the master plan. We gave master plan a charge, and I'm very reluctant to take any one of the tools out of their toolbox. They look at boundaries, they look at facility usage, they look at, you know, all those kinds of things. And I'm reluctant to disrespect, I guess, the work that they're doing by saying, "We've made the decision for you, one way or the other." I'm also cautious that should we vote tonight to not close any school in the next school year, which is 18, 19, what does that say? So that's a temporary decision. It does not solve the problem of the families at Stansbury and Van Buren. You're going to have a whole nother year where you're going to be wondering what you're going to be doing for that year. So that's something I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around. And the hard reality is, you've seen the numbers. I gave you the numbers. If a school is under threat of closure, new families are going to be very reluctant to enroll their children there. I mean, you've mentioned it, some of your parents have mentioned it yourself. You've had friends move away or move out of the school because they didn't know what was going to happen. And so I think by us not making any kind of committed firm decision, we're extending that uncertainty.
I would like to see us take next year, come up with a plan, a true plan, of what it needs to look like when we do move forward with closing, if we do. And to look at other options on how we can better use those 22 seats that are available, or 22% of the seats that are sitting empty. And have really something in writing so that we have a way to move forward.
Paul, you have anything else?
Yeah, a couple things. So first, I'm feeling myself getting more and more frustrated as I hear this conversation. And so maybe Stan, you can help relieve my frustration. But I don't know how we've had, talked about this for years and years and years, but yet we're still, what I'm hearing tonight, this board is, we haven't seen a plan, we haven't seen numbers, we don't understand the issue. Any history at all, you can say how we got to this point where we're feeling the pressure to make a decision, but we have nothing in front of us.
The reason you don't have anything in front of you is because a month ago, you asked us to hand this back to master planning, who will be coming forward with something in front of you. The reason you don't have it tonight is because it was specifically asked for a vote on this tonight by one board member. And we are not going to, you know, we were trying to work with the master planning on this so that we had a, it's not an issue that's the superintendent's issue, or any of that. The reason you don't have anything tonight is because you asked for a vote tonight ahead of schedule of the master planning report. You'll have that when they come forward. But you don't have it tonight for a reason. Do you understand?
So for the past few years that we've had this discussion, has there been no information generated, no?
Yeah, you've had, you've had, you, part of it has been that master planning has talked about this, and in a lot of different contexts, wrestling with it themselves. I guess where I am, Paul, on this, because when you say that, it feels like there's, let's find somebody to blame for why we're not having the right conversation tonight. And I don't want to go there. What I want to do is, I want to be fair to this community about the fact that we have a serious financial problem in this community. And it's not fair for people not to know that these kinds of things are being considered, whether it's these two schools or others, under the circumstances we find ourselves. We were trying to legitimately create an opportunity through the master planning to come up with a proposal with all of that, and come to a head with this finally in March. And I'd like to ask the question, too, before I got here, why wasn't it being talked about? You know, it's a great question, Paul, you know, because here's the challenge we face. When we talk about a $5 million budget problem right now, what I don't tell you is that when we built the budget last year, we didn't include $2 million for literacy program for elementary. We didn't include another approximately $1 million for computer refresh. I have computers in my classrooms, in my teachers right now, that are as old as 11 years. And they're just barely hanging on. And those decisions were put aside. We didn't bring to the board last year a proposal for a math literacy, excuse me, a secondary math program, which is over $1 million. We didn't bring to the board last year a whole bunch of issues around the whole infrastructure in terms of supporting technology. We didn't bring to the board some other proposals, and I've got a whole laundry list of them. So the real problem isn't $5 million. The problem is more like probably $10 or $15 million. And then I get emails from people accusing me personally of just not being very good at managing the money. The fact of the matter is, the revenue base of this school district has been short for, and you know, I'm just telling what you all know, has been short $14 million a year ever since the state of Colorado decided they couldn't fund schools at the regular rate. So we've been, we've been trying to work with that issue. We've also had to work with the issue of having some growth, but not a lot in terms of money available. And at the same time, spread out over 362 square miles, which is unusual. We have basically more schools in this school district than you generally would have for 15,000 students. And that's because of our demographics, and where our populations are, and all that. And that's just a fact. We have to live with it. We have to manage that. But all of those put pressures on the budget. And we have been slowly but surely, since I got here, we were at $29 million in reserves. We're now down to, probably by the end of this year, we'll be down to at least $16 million, and going south very, very much so, as Mr. Levy said. So, back to the point, and your question. We were moving forward with master planning to come up with a very comprehensive look at costs and all that goes with it, as they were directed to do in March. The reason we're not prepared tonight to provide those kinds of specifics is because you asked for this item to be on the agenda as a discussion item, and then possibly have a vote to make sure that, certainly the folks that are here tonight, know one way or the other what's going to happen next year. So I'm not really prepared to come as superintendent tonight to recommend anything till that report comes out from MPC. But if the board feels strongly enough, and certainly, as it was said by the president, the will of the board is to, let's just put this off for a year, then certainly you can do that. But I do want to make sure you understand that. We didn't come here just to have another general conversation about closing schools. We came tonight because we were asked to, ahead of schedule in terms of what we'd planned to bring to the board in March, okay?
So part of the thinking behind that comment, too, is, and I wanted an opportunity for you to share some of it. I know we've been talking about this, again, for, probably since I've been in this district 14 years ago. And whether it's been the current makeup of the board, or community issue, whatever it is, we've always had this issue in front of us. But there's always been some reason, someone shut it down, kicked it down the road, I don't want to be the bad, whatever it might be. So part of the reason I think we're here today, still fighting this discussion, is not because it hasn't been discussed, and there hasn't been efforts being done, is that there's always something that comes up that shuts the conversation down. Which leads to my last point of saying is, we have to confront this once and for all. So I don't, I'm not prepared to shut a school for next year. I think there's too much work left to be done. But I think by the end of this school year, we need to have that decision made. We need to quit putting it off like it's been put off. Get the plan in place. Let's have discussion, make the absolute best decision we can by the end of this year. And just make the best decision. Let's get on with it.
Mark, you have anything else?
I would agree with Barbara that I'm looking forward to seeing a plan. I think we need the time to put together that plan. As I said before, there are so many questions. Every time I ask a question and find an answer, I've got five more questions. When I try to compare, the state funding is really, there's a great resource out there on the Colorado State website. You can put together a comparison of four different districts, and see how much per pupil funding they've got. It's interesting to look at that and compare our district's funding levels to those of other districts. When you look at where we are versus the rest of the state, you can understand why we're having so many financial challenges. When you look at a couple of the districts, and I've talked to some people about this. They say, "Hey, there are other districts in the state that are, you know, they've got the same per pupil funding that you do, they're doing fine." But the dynamics, the comparison and contrast of this district versus that district, it's completely different, right? You know, we have a huge district, square mileage-wise. That makes many different challenges. And so when you look at like, how much it costs to run a district out on the plains, you know, the per pupil funding is much higher. The requirements are much higher because they have fewer resources available to them. And so there are efficiencies that are inherently built into some districts when you have higher population density. So, again, you know, every time I delve into this, I see more questions. And so I feel like we need more time. We need to put together a comprehensive plan that's going to take care of this budget issue. And we need the community to understand just how serious this problem is. And how much effort has been done to try to fix it by some very talented people.
All right, I think I'm going to...
Can I just throw in one? And I know I already said it earlier, I just want to say it again, just because I've had people come and talk to me that, just as we go through the budget process and approve different things, making sure we are demonstrating and educating, and making sure people know we are trying to be efficient as we can. Because again, I got asked several times of, you know, "You're going to approve $200,000 and add something to the budget tonight, and then you're going to turn around and tell us we have to close schools." And trying to avoid those mixed messages, and just being real clear how we're connecting the dots and how we're moving forward.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and, I guess we've discussed this right. Is there a motion that you want to make?
I move that we move this agenda item, discussion item, to an action item.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move the item regarding, the item regarding potential school closures to an action item. Is there any further discussion? You can make, somebody can make the specific motion going forward. But for that, we're just moving it to action. Okay, Wendy, if you want to call the roll, please.
Al Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Vizdo-Ward?
No.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes six to one. So that is now action item 6.5. Wendy, is that correct?
We're going to make it 6.5, correct.
6.5, and move all the others down?
Yep.
Okay, so now I, shoot, now I will entertain a motion, a specific motion as to what you want that motion to be regarding school closures for the 18, 19 school year.
Well, I'd like to make two motions, because you could debate them, and you could amend them easier. The first motion I'd like to make, and Dr. Shear, I'd like your input into this. But I would like the district to submit to the board a schedule, next meeting of when you, when and how, just a schedule of how you're going to present the information to us to close the budget for the year 1920.
No, I'm going to say that's out of order right now. I want the motion to talk about the school closure.
I'll be glad to do that.
So go ahead and state that.
My motion is to, we will delay closing any schools until the year 1920, so that we have a comprehensive plan in place before we make those radical or larger decisions. Yeah, 1920.
Second.
I'm writing this down, just one second.
Sure. You want me to write it down, because it's my motion?
You can, or I can read it back.
Okay.
You can correct me. So your motion was to delay closing any schools until the 2019, 20, 2020, until the 2019, 2020 school year, until we have a comprehensive... school year, until we have a comprehensive plan in place, essentially.
To balance the budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to delay closing any schools until the school year 2019, 2020, until we have a comprehensive plan in place to balance the budget.
I think just the motion is to allow time to, to develop a comprehensive plan. That's really what I think is appropriate.
Until we have time to develop, okay. Okay. All right, now is there any discussion around that?
I think this is relevant to it, so Dr. Shear, you might be able to answer this. So do you see any problems at all of having this plan and having enough information that by the end of this school year, we could make a decision not only on one or two schools, but a comprehensive long-term decision?
I think we can do that. I think we can have a plan certainly in place for, for that, that, you know, takes into account closure in that next, at the end of that next year. But yes, we can have that done. We need to get it done, and it's being worked on right now. We have elements of it already in master planning committee's hands to work on. And the idea was to have something like that available in March, and if it would be, you know, so to answer your question, yes.
I don't think we need to amend the motion, but that was just the way it stated. I don't want that to mean we're not going to have a plan till summer next year, but let's, let's get this plan in place and be ready to make a decision by the end of the year.
If I can to clarify that, including quite honestly, and the comment was made by Ms. Cruz, and I think it's a good one. The thing that's been lacking in this district for a number of years has been enough policy and regulation around this issue to assist the board in terms of, of directing this to be done. And also for the community to know that that policy's in place. So at the very top of this structure that we're talking about bringing to you through the master planning, will be a policy and a regulation that basically creates what I would call triggers for this conversation that includes timelines and all that goes with it. That's coming, that's coming to you as a part of the total plan.
Dr. Shear, do we have other districts that have such policies in place that we can compare and contrast?
There are some that are similar, but nothing that's that specific. And quite frankly, it's the piece that's been missing, I think, for a number of years. And, you know, hindsight's always 2020 with me. I wish now, a few years ago, I would have said, we've got to have that policy in place before we do anything. But it's, it's out there, but it's, it's not always, it's, it's, it's not that comprehensive in everything we've looked at. I've had Dr. Crespo doing some research on it, and we've worked on it, we've got some language that we're providing master planning to look at. But that's the number one issue to start with, and then from there, everything else begins to work itself in terms of timelines and all that kind of thing.
Paul, listen to your comment. Should we amend the motion to say the district will submit to us a comprehensive plan, say by April 1st? And so that we have two months to debate it and discuss it? Because we, I think one of the values would be that we're not going to close the schools, okay? We, we, I think the board, I think the board is going in that direction. But the idea is we want to have a comprehensive plan. Should we have a separate motion?
Right, I, I don't, if I can, I mean, I don't think we need to amend the motion. I mean, Dr. Shear told me he can have this, the plan in place that we can deal with at the end of the year, so I believe him on that.
Yeah.
I think we're good.
My discomfort with this, this whole issue is that, is that we're, and I don't even know how to express it well, but that we're voting on something that is an absence of something. And that troubles me. We're voting on something we're not going to do. And how long then does that not, that inaction carry forward? That's my concern.
That's my point. My point would be, I agree with you. My point would be that this year in June, the board will vote on what cuts we are going to make to our budget in the year 2019, 2020. Because that will include possibly school closes, possibly eliminating bus service, possibly, possibly, possibly. We need to have that comprehensive plan. I don't feel comfortable voting anything, as, as Mark said, until you have a complete plan. So I think what really the motion is, is not, what we're not doing, is what we're saying is, we want to develop a plan that we're going to approve by June of, of this year. And, and we're approving steps to get it.
That's not, that's not what we've got on the table right now, though. Right now, we've got a motion to delay closing schools until 2019, 2020, until we have time to develop a comprehensive plan to balance the budget. It might be...
Well, I'm, I'm happy to move on.
Happy with that?
Yeah, I'm happy.
I just say, so part of my, my thoughts too is, is, is one, I think, as a board and as administration, we need to continue to build trust with our community. And I think by taking this vote tonight and passing this, one, we're going to show them that we're willing to take the time to make the right decision at the right time. And second, they've made it very clear to us, there's been certain things told to them, and in their minds, promise to them, deadlines given, and if we continue to renege on that, how are they going to trust us? How are they going to believe anything we say anymore? I think we need to uphold what we said originally, that they haven't had a decision by now, and that we're not going to spring one on them in a month or now, or two months from now. So I think we need to honor that, and then go through the process to make a good decision.
Okay, are we okay with the motion the way it stands then? And are we ready to call for a vote? So let me just make clear that a yes vote on this motion is to delay closing schools. A no vote is to not delay closing schools. Okay. A yes vote on this motion is to delay closing schools in this school year in 1819. So a yes vote will delay closing schools until 2019, 2020. A no vote is a no against the motion to delay. Okay? All right, Wendy?
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visda Ward?
No.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
Okay, so that motion passes six to one. The next item on the agenda then is, let's see, we'll move back up into 6.6. Is that correct? You guys want to take a little break? Okay, let's, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll resume with, it'll now be 6.6, which is approval of the 2018, 2019 school calendar. Come on, kids. All right, I'd like to call us back to order, please. Thank you, the next item up for discussion, or action actually, the next action item is item now 6.6, which is approval of the 2018, 2019 school calendar. We've just, is this my wall? This is mine. Oh, shoot, you're going to have to give me a minute, sorry, my board docs went away. Okay, so the 2018, 2019 school calendar. This has been presented to us as two separate calendars last time around, and the committee has come forward now with the one calendar they want to recommend. Dr. Sebers, do you want to, do you have anything to say? Board, do you have any questions for Dr. Sebers? Should we just take this? All right.
I move, we approve the calendar for 2018, 2019.
I second Ms. Howard.
Great, it's been moved and seconded to approve the calendar as presented for 2018, 2019. Is there any discussion? Paul?
I just want to say, this was an interesting one for me, because I think the, the last meeting, I think Jeff put me on the spot and asked me how I would vote, and I said I would have voted for this one.
And now you're changing your mind?
But I also found out that people do watch our board meetings and listen, because the very next day, I had several emails, several phone calls, had a couple in-person meetings, which was kind of showing, explaining the other side to me that there were, there were some concerns around, you know, an hour a week. And by the time they get in there and they're thinking about their whole day and planning everything else, do you really get a quality hour out of it? And the continuity of it, as well as there's still an issue with custodial care with the kids, and what are you going to do if you start an hour late and all that? So without belaboring it, to be honest, by the time I've had these discussions, yes, they convinced me that this is not probably the best model. I, and I don't know if there's a timeline too, that, but I also know that at least, and maybe you guys can update it, but at the last meeting, the principal group had not seen the calendar committee, so there wasn't any necessarily in input from them. And I think the teacher group had also had not really seen the calendar give an input. So if that's changed, I'd love to hear anything, but, so that also had me thinking as well. But just to make it short, is, I, I think I'm now convinced between the childcare and just the hour and the quality of that hour versus the alternative, that I am flipping my mind. Not losing it yet, but flipping it.
Well, I guess we heard Andy Crisman, who is the president of the TEA, speak positively about this. So I, I do feel like the teachers have had quite a bit of time and a feedback and speak, you know, and maybe I misunderstood what Andy said, but I thought he said that there was a lot of great collaboration, both on the committee and a wider scope as well. So I guess I do feel like the teachers had quite a bit of input on this. So am I wrong, Dr. Sebers, or, okay, I just want to be sure. Thanks.
Something I could ask, can I just ask, and was there, I know there, I guess what they're referring to is, I guess in the past, there's like a survey that went out, or actually went out, and there was questions that, why that didn't happen again. And I don't want to belabor that point, it's not, but, yeah, I guess I'll ask.
I'm the president of the school board, Dr. Shear, Bill Sebers, Chief Human Resources Officer. Just to give you feedback, you know, a conversation I had, I'll, I'll start it years ago, about five, five years ago. So this is my fourth year in the position in facilitating the calendar committee. So in, in the past, basically, what, what has happened is calendar committee would create three calendars, three calendars would go out to the whole community, to staff, and gather feedback there of which one they prefer. It would go back to the board and the board would decide. So the first year, taking over the committee, the idea would be to put our best thinking forward and move one calendar forward. So we've done that for the last few years, and then this year, the conversation with the board throughout, throughout the few months, was that the board would entertain two calendars and move forward and have a discussion there. So from moving the two calendars that we presented at the last board meeting, we, we went back to calendar committee and we kind of had a discussion of where the board was, where we were, and what we would move forward for the board to vote on one calendar. So from there, we have 17, 17 members on the calendar committee, and each stakeholder is represented. And, and from there, they gave their input on what calendar they would support. So as far as, you know, sending something out specifically, count, calendar committee was tasked to put two calendars together. Plus the other thing about the calendars, there have been conversations about the calendar task force committee that was in place, and that was a large representation from administration and from teachers. And we put forward our beliefs and value systems forward with that. And then the recruitment retained task force had an opportunity to kind of move things forward, and a part of it was to, you know, you know, there was support around a late start calendar. So hopefully that adds to your question.
I think Dave had something, and then Mark.
I'm going to vote yes on this. Paul made a very, Dr. Banks made a very good point. Why is it on one hand, you're saying you're going to have to cut $5 million, and then you're adding money into the budget? And I want to present my reasons why. There's, as many members on the board have said, and I truly believe, the board could do no better service to the district than enact policies and attitudes that attract or retain the best teachers. At the end of the day, when I saw a second grader read so well, I know we had a wonderful teacher, first and second grade, teaching that student. Yes, this is going to have a negative impact on the budget, but with a school district where 40% or more of our teachers have five years' experience or less, or less, where we're going to hear later on how teachers come here because they can't get hired at other places, and then move on to other districts. This is, I think, on the sum of all the issues, this is a very positive move. So I congratulate you, Dr. Sebers, the committee, I know some members are on the committee, and I think this is a very positive step forward.
Dr. Sebers, as new member of the board, I'm, just want to ask kind of a forest for the trees question. How is the calendar committee organized? Do people?
Nothing's organized.
It's, we would call them lucky winners in the lottery of selecting the calendar committee. So, and, and invite goes out. So, so basically, four years ago, when we put the calendar committee, we, we got input, we invited people, of course, people said yes or no. And then making sure that we're in compliance with board policy and all stakeholders are represented. Then from there, basically, since the work has been done on the calendar committee, the following year would be an invite for whoever was on the calendar committee to stay on calendar committee. So then each year, you know, some people leave, some people stay, and then we send out other invites for those stakeholders that we've lost. For example, we lost a parent, we found another parent to be a part of it. It, it's, it's a tough balance of making sure you have the right amount, and not too much, and not too less.
Couple of quick questions. So first, Mr. Levy made the comment back there to have a, a negative impact on the budget. I didn't think that was accurate. So is this a negative impact on the budget, or, no?
No.
Okay. And then my other question was, and I should know this, but there's a couple of dates on there, like, where students aren't there, but teachers are there, like January 4th and February 28th. So what happens on those days? Are those workdays, are those PDs? What happens on those days?
So tho, those days would be non-instructional time with staff. So that could look as a workday, a PD day, it, it's, if this gets passed, basically, we would move these dates to negotiations, and negotiations would put together a schedule around those dates that are established.
Question?
It's not a question, it's a comment. And, and I just have to make this because I feel like an hour is not near enough, that if you're going to do it, you need to go for an hour and a half or two hours for down the road. Once we get over this hurdle with the parents, because I think there will be a little bit of pushback on it from the parents, then I think we need to really look at it, for it's going to be quality time. An hour is just enough to get the teacher settled down, and boom, it's over. So think down the road, perhaps extending, if it's maintained.
Anybody else? Are we ready for a vote? We do have the motion and the second, correct? Okay. Lost track there for a minute. Okay, Wendy, call the roll, please.
Paul Banks?
I've been persuaded the other way, I'm trusting Bill and Andy in the comments that this has been good faith, so, aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visda Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
I think I'm in the same boat as Paul. Dr. Banks, aye.
Jeff Swante?
Aye.
All right, I think that passed unanimously. Was it seven all?
Yes, I'd like to thank all calendar committee members that are in the audience. Nice job. We did it! We did it!
All right, that takes us to now item 6.7, which is the resolution declaring January is National School Board Recognition Month. My personal favorite, who gets to awkwardly read that proclamation? Is that you, Pam?
I guess it's in front of my desk.
All right, go for it.
I'm not, this is so awkward, like, hi, thank myself and ourselves. "State of Colorado proclamation. Whereas the education of our children is vital to the future of Colorado, and whereas a solid education establishes the foundation upon which we build achievement and advancement, and which also gives fulfillment to our dreams and expectations. And whereas the furthering of education is dependent not only upon the effectiveness of teaching staffs, but also upon the unwavering support of parents, administrators, local communities, and local boards of education. And whereas the members of school boards share a commitment to serve by investing many hours of volunteer, yes, we don't get paid, volunteer labor to help ensure that students in Colorado are g- help ensure that students in Colorado are given an opportunity to excel through education. And whereas school board members are extraordinary people who tackle the enormous job-
Turn to your right, please.
Say that louder. This is so awkward. Who tackle the enormous job of governing our school districts, and whose actions and decisions help impact the present and future lives of young Coloradans. And whereas the dedication of school board members across our state should be recognized and commended, therefore, I, not John Hickenlooper, but, signed by Governor John W. Hickenlooper. There we go.
And I believe, do we have to take a vote to accept that?
Do we have to take a vote?
Well, it's down on the, it's on a discussion.
It's on an action.
It is an action item.
Yes.
I think we do. I think we will entertain a motion to-
We did it last year.
Go ahead, Jeff.
I feel uncomfortable voting for this proclamation. Sounds to me like the governor's already done it. I would feel more comfortable if, yeah, somebody else is reading it. Yeah, I, I don't want to vote on it.
Then we'd have to change the-
Sadly, we have it listed as an action item, so we will all feel equally uncomfortable.
Can I make a move? We move it off the?
I, I, I think it'd be easiest at this point if we just go ahead and vote to accept the proclamation.
Hickenlooper wants us to do it.
Out of respect to the governor.
Thank you. Out of respect to the governor. And as this is our only pay, let's go ahead. So is that a motion, Paul?
Yes.
Yes, yes. I move that we accept this proclamation.
Okay, it's been moved. How about a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the governor's proclamation declaring the month of January, school board, National School Board Recognition Month. Wendy, call the roll, please.
Paul Banks?
Aye.
Pam Howard?
Aye.
Lori Visder Ward?
Aye.
Barbara Cruz?
Aye.
Dave Levy?
Aye.
Mark Sutter?
Aye.
Jeff Swanty?
Okay.
Well, and, and that passed unanimously. And in order to take some of the awkwardness out of it, we're also recognizing all the others, one hundred and seventy-seven school boards in Colorado. So it's not just us. We're not alone in this job. Okay, that moves us down to discussion items. Item seven point one, McPherson and Jacobson Superintendent Search Update. Dr. Sebers will lead us off, and then we'll hear from the folks at, from McPherson Jacobson.
I'm President of the School Board, Dr. Shear, Bill Sebers, Chief Human Resources Officer. At this time, I would like to introduce Steve Baker, who is a member of the McPherson and Jacobson team. Also in the audience is Jane McDaniel, who's been working, both of them have been working hard together for the last two, two days. And we'd like to turn over to them to discuss what they have found out, talking at all the forums.
Madam President, members of the board, good to see you again, Dr. Shear. Just a reminder, Jane is, is new here. She wasn't here in December when I was here. You are extraordinary people. And Jane was one of those extraordinary people, too. She served on a school board in Nebraska for, I think, about fifteen years, and her father was a superintendent in the school district. And, and I'm now in my six-month retirement from being a superintendent. You know, there's, there's hard nights, and I'm glad we're here for one of those. We, we've spent two days in the district and learned a lot, learned a lot about the district. One thing I've learned is the mountains are to the west. So if you're lost when you're driving, people keep telling us that. Thank you for selecting Mac and Jake of McPherson Jacobson to assist you with this very, very important process. Over the two days, we met with eighteen groups, and some bigger than, than others. One of the things I just want to say as a summary is, you have incredibly good people here. And there's a lot of pride, a lot of pride in this school district. As we were meeting with the groups, there were four consistent questions that we asked them to give us feedback. And I typed my little fingers away as fast as possible, and eventually you're going to get all those comments. I'm just going to summarize some of the feedback we had on those four questions, and not in any priority order. I just went back and scribbled notes down. But the four questions we were asking the participants were, tell us good things about the community. Then we asked, good things about the district. Then we asked, what are the issues facing the next superintendent? And finally, what are the characteristics should this new superintendent have? So I just kind of want to talk through briefly these four questions. So we started with the good things about the community. I probably could just say one statement, because one person summed it up and said, it's Colorado. Who wouldn't want to live here? And it's kind of like the duh response there. But, you know, we heard things about the weather. Heard arts came up a lot, you know, that's special in this community. The proximity to higher education, community colleges, medical facilities surrounding here. Heard this a lot, that small-town feel, even though we're getting bigger, there's that preservation of that small-town feel. We're centrally located, and we're a close-knit community. Then we said, okay, let's now focus on the school district. Tell us good things about the school district. Innovation, not all cookie-cutter schools, but the most important thing out of this was meets the needs of kids, meets the needs of kids. Opportunity for choice came up a lot. The partnership and the collaboration with civic and community groups. Jane and I were really impressed with the volunteerism, the number, the fact that you have someone here or people in the office helping organize that. But this was the most important thing. This is by far the most important thing about what stood out about the district, the staff. One person said, they're capable of doing on a shoestring budget, what they're capable of doing on a shoestring budget is amazing. We met with some representatives from your, four of the five high schools. Neat, neat kids. And they talked about the teachers. They talked about the teacher that was short two science books, there wasn't money to buy him, and reached in their own pocket to buy those science books. You've got some incredible people here. But more important, you have kids that see that. And so that, that really stood out. If, if you could have had, if we'd have had a camera in the room videotaping our fifteen minutes with those students, it would have been a fabulous commercial for this school district. So you'd be very proud of that. Now, what are the issues facing the next superintendent? I came to the right board meeting for some of those issues, because we, we heard about some of them. But, you know, probably what's talked about the most is, is funding, it's money, and things that then kept falling into the money category was, we're losing staff because of pay. We have aging buildings, we got bus challenges, we have deferred maintenance. And, you know, people would talk about the deferred maintenance, and they didn't all have it down to the exact million-dollar amount, but it's somewhere between sixty-eight and seventy-three million. And so I would hear some pretty accurate numbers, I think, from what was going on there. There was, this was important, and I hope I'm expressing it right, dealing with the perception, whether it's false or true, but you had a bond levy issue that failed. And there's a perception that there was false information put out. And so we were hearing that repeatedly. This is how I wrote down to express this topic you're dealing with tonight. The challenge of not having the seats for the students, sometimes necessarily where you need to have the seats. And, and those are challenges school districts face. Communication, it's not that you're doing a bad job, but you need to do a better job of telling your story, because you have a good story to tell. And, and then the last of the, the issues, and this isn't a one-time thing, this came up quite a bit, mental health and social emotional issues. So we, we heard that a lot from, from the various groups. Finally, what are the characteristics that you would want the new superintendent to have? And some adjectives to begin with, and this was really a good way of expressing this. An evangelist, a marketer, a relationship builder, a communicator, a strong leader that is visible, problem solver, open to ideas. Several mentioned the need for strong financial background. Need to be compassionate, but also courage to make tough decisions, live in the community. And the last comment I wrote down was, the energy to walk the streets, and the political savvy to work the room. Energy to walk the streets and the political savvy to work the room. That's, briefly, we heard hundreds and hundreds of comments from people. Summary of our timeline, just refresh it. Applications, they're coming in now. They close the end of February. Dr. Jacobson and I are scheduled to be back, I believe it's March 20th, to meet with you and to bring you a list of some possible candidates, which we'll work with you, and that list will be narrowed down. Those will be the finalists that you would be interviewing that week of, remember March 26th? We all agreed to those dates there, four dates. And that you would do the interviews with the final selection taking place in April. Bill has just been outstanding as our point of contact, and Tom and Dorothy took care of Jane and I the last couple of days here, and, and I really appreciate that. It, it is good to come back here. I learned a lot about your district and Jane and I in, in the last couple of days, and it will be of value to us in, in the process. Any questions I can answer for you tonight? We're not catching our flight tonight, we're catching it tomorrow morning.
More questions?
Remind me about the videotapes. When do we see those?
When we would bring them to you on, on the 20th.
The 20th, okay.
Yeah. And that, you know, I know Dr. Jacobson talked about, he throws a number, I, we don't know what that number's going to be right now. Maybe it's, maybe it's ten, maybe it's six or seven. But those that we think, okay, these are the ones that you really need to be considering, they do a video of three questions, three minutes each question, and you have an opportunity to, to look at those. And that's kind of where help you draw it down to the finalists.
And then we'll get a write-up of what, what you have from tonight. You'll just, we'll get something by email?
Yes, absolutely. One, I need to do a lot of spell checking, because I was typing fast there, and get things organized. And it is a reminder, the, the survey, those four questions, it's online. You can do that, and, and that also will be fed in, and that would be included in a report to you.
Quick question.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Dave.
Dave, then Paul.
Okay, thank you. In the process where people submit their resumes, you have a feeling now for our district. Somebody might have zero feeling from our district. Is it advantageous, is it part of the normal process where you start communicating to them, they start asking you questions about the district, or is?
We don't have personal communication with them.
Okay.
No, no, they're, they're applying. You know, you know, I, I think, you know, as a, as a superintendent, you know, you sit in these things, you say, okay, you know, what would I be doing there? Well, I'd be researching, you know, everything I could about this school district if I was, was interested in it. I'd be looking at your website, your agendas. I'd try and find someone I knew around here, tell me about this school district. That's, that's what the serious candidates are doing right now.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
I'm not sure how your answer's going to help me one way or another, but I'm just curious, for the number of people showing up at these groups, did you feel like it was what you expected? Was it maybe more people than you typically get in those groups? Was it a low turnout?
It's what I, it's what I expected. It, it really was. I, I have found in my, my career personally, that it is becoming more and more challenging for us in, in education to communicate. You, you can have as many meetings as you want, but you'll probably have the same people always show up there, and that's the challenge in trying to pass bond levies, those types of things. And I, I wish I had an easy answer to say, well, it's social media or whatever it is. It's just, communication is always a challenge for us. Even when we think we're doing it well, we need to keep saying, how can I do it better? But, so I wasn't surprised.
Any else? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's very much.
Okay. That brings us to items, discussion item seven point two, which is the seal of bilinguacy for graduation.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Margaret Crespo, Chief Academic Officer, and I am very excited to share this with you. If you remember, last year, we did an approval for the seal of bilinguacy, and at this point, we're just giving you an update as our students are preparing. I'd like to interrupt, introduce, it's only nine twenty, Toni Tyson, who's going to do the presentation for us. She is an amazing staff member, and we would not be able to do any of this without her, so.
Thank you. So, good evening, Men of Chair and the board members. Are you still awake? So I'll be talking for the next hour and a half in several languages.
I was going to say.
Oh, puede que ir. So we're going to talk a little bit about the seal of bilinguacy, which is a wonderful opportunity for kids. And guess what? It's not costing us any money. Okay, where's the little?
Toni, can you, Toni, can you pull up your mic? There you go.
Yes, I can. So there we go. So let's just talk a little, which one is this button? It's this button? Here we go. So it's really interesting, because we were working really hard on the seal of bilinguacy. This, it took us about three years. We had a few hiccups along the way, but that's what you're doing when you're going through the legislative process. So last year, we became the twenty-seventh state. There are now more than that that are happening in the United States, saying that it's important to be bilingual. And not only bilingual, but bilinguistic. So if you take a look at the states here, okay, and every state has some kind of different opportunity you did. We had to go through a legislative process. The first time, it was a little rough. The second time, we learned some lessons, and we got, we were able to make the leadway through that. So it really says, here we are. When you get the seal of bilinguacy, the seal of bilinguacy is something that a senior is trying to strive for. And what we are going to say is that you have a proficiency in English that is stated by what you need to have for the state in English, and a proficiency in another language. And when you take a look at the demand for bilingual workers in our country, it's amazing. If you go to indeed.com, I just, I did this the last time we were looking at this, and I typed in bilingual jobs in our area, three hundred and four came up. Three hundred and four jobs that needed something where a student needs to be bilinguistic. So you can take a look where they're in finance, healthcare, all kinds of languages for all kinds of things. And here's a little things about how much money we lose because of language and cultural misunderstandings. One, in our country alone, translation, the whole translation business is a huge business, because we have so many people that are monolingual. And so here we go, here's a chance that we can change that. And you're, I mean, I'm not going to go into some of this detail. You can see this as it's on there, because we're, it's really late. But I'm going to talk a little bit about Colorado. There's been a ninety-one percent increase in jobs tied to international trade. But only seventeen percent speaker can other, can use another language other than English. We're not the only state that's in the same type of situations. So let's just talk about what the seal of bilinguacy is. It's a credential. It is something that they need in their future that says, I can, again, communicate and use the language in English and another world language, okay? And we're looking for the seniors. Now, this is not something that we all made up. Take a look at the organizations that were part of this. ACTFL is the national world language. NACSEFL is the state supervisors. NABE, of course, is the bilingual, and TESOL is teaching English to students of other languages. So they've come up with some guidelines of which we follow. So we understand, we're not talking about bilingual, but we're talking about bilinguistic. So they have to be able to read, write, and speak. And we're talking about that level of proficiency, not seat time, but what they can do with a language, okay? And I, you know, this kind of passes up a little bit along the line, okay? So what can our senior, what can our students do? Here's what the, what they have to be able to choose from in English. They have to be able to choose, complete one of these. Of course, they have to complete a lot of these in English, but one of these would make them eligible from the English side, okay? In our world languages, if you take a look, we do not use so much, even though on our course description books, we have level one, level two, but we're all talking about proficiencies. I mean, you take a look at the proficiencies, for us to get to the proficiency that they need in a world language, it is intermediate low. So intermediate low does not mean level one or level two. It is in level four and level five. So you're looking at the AP level, the IB level. It, it's really that they're moving beyond the basic survival communication to moving into functional communication. So these are the criteria- So these are the criteria that we can use in order to choose for the bilingual side. Okay? So you have to complete one of these, one of them is like the AP test, the IB test. So let's suppose we have students that didn't take AP or IB. We also have a national test called the Apple Test, which is through our organizations, our world language organizations, which has all of these different languages where we can still check their proficiency. Now, let's just think a little bit about our students who are heritage or native speakers. Quite often, we look at language as kind of, it really is an asset. They say it is an asset, oh, you just don't know English enough. But take a look at those that are already bilingual. They can take this and they can have the seal of bilinguacy on their transcript. This is wonderful. It's saying that we really appreciate and we know. So if we don't teach these languages, it doesn't say that for the seal of bilinguacy, you have to be in a class. In fact, we now have 70 students signed up for it. Now, not all of them will make it, but we have four Vietnamese, two Thai, one Norwegian, one Chinese, and we're figuring out all that we can do to make sure those kids have that opportunity as a senior to get the seal of bilinguacy. California's been doing this for a long time and now employers are looking for that seal of bilinguacy. You may not understand, this is something that I see as sacred for world languages and it's our pyramid because we don't talk about fluency, we talk about proficiency. So if you see up here in the intermediate mid-range, that's the absolute minimum. That's what every one state does. So if we're in an AP or an IB course, that's what that means, using the language. So you see that there is other levels and they can reach for that afterwards and sometimes our native and heritage language people will also score higher. And when we talk about how do we give the opportunities for these kids to have this, you know, we need to have some equitable opportunities for kids to reach this level five if they're not a native or heritage speaker. So you know, really to get to those pieces, we have to really kind of take a look at some of our middle school programs to support that. And we've been doing a lot of different types of things to help that along the way. Also, remember, we have our dual-language program, which these kids who are in dual-language can reach this. We are seeing the kids in ninth grade and 10th grade are taking that AP test and scoring 80. We just had with Utah trying to work a little bit with their first group and they had over 80% of the kids who did this in all kinds of languages. This is such a great opportunity for kids. Are you not happy that I'm the last one here today? Okay. So you know, this is some of the deadlines that we had so far, but one of the things, I was here to tell you a little bit about this opportunity. One of the things we want to do in the spring is to bring that first crowd in so you can see, here we have, that we really have these kids have met this level and they are bilingual, English and bilingual and belligerent in another language. So that's all I have to say. I just wanted to inform you and we're in the process of figuring all this stuff out, but we do have a website. So it's small, we're on step one, we've been working with a lot of other states and a lot of other people, but here it is. And so it's on the district site. That's all I have for you and I'm excited and I hope you are too. So anything else can I help you out with? Questions?
Paul?
One comment, one question. So first, this is very exciting to me, one of the areas I'm very passionate about and the opportunity, I think we have to just develop more belligerent students, I think is very exciting and knowing the expertise and passion we already have in the district, I think this is a particular area that we can start speeding ahead of some of our surrounding districts and this could give us a competitive edge. So I hope we continue to make the progress that you've been making. So my question is, so the current curriculum and coursework and everything we have in place now, if every student wanted to achieve this certificate, would we, do we have the structure in place that would happen or is this something we need to be looking at for resources to allow more kids to receive this?
Well, we're going to have pathways to bilinguacy. So for example, when all the students, we have five schools that have what we call FLESS programs, which is foreign language in the elementary schools, which means they meet 30 minutes twice a week. And then we also have our two dual-language immersion. So they'll be part of the first pathways that say, "Hey, you're on your path," like in fifth grade, we'll say that. But that's only five elementary schools and then two of the dual-language. Our middle school programs need to be boosted up a little bit because really, we have nobody applying from Berthardt because we don't really have a plan, you know, with the middle schools, sometimes we're not reaching that point where the kids can get to those level-two pieces. And we have a strong program that we run at Irwin because they're connected to IB. I think where we need to do is less of times when we talk about world language programs around the country, we call the middle school kind of like the bikini model, you know, that you've really worked hard in elementary, you really worked hard in high school, somewhere in the middle where you have a bikini on, you're not really thinking about that as much. But this is a much more serious thing. We used to think language learning was just something cute to have. Now it's an essential skill. If we really want to give kids an opportunity to excel in different types of things, they want to collaborate and work in the world. And to rely on translators is not going to do it. They'll tell you, so we have a lot of kids moving that path. We just need to strengthen some of our areas, but we're doing pretty well. And I really like to see that the counselors helped us a lot this year, finding those kids who are already belligerent in other languages to sign up for this. So it's exciting. Last, the DPS has been working on this for three years because they were a part of the program that was a pilot. They had 900 kids sign up this year in 14 different languages. Yay! I've been waiting for this for a long time, so I think it's so exciting. So off we go and that's all I have to say unless you have more questions.
Is there something, Jeff, did you have something?
I'll pretty much say what I want to say. Congratulations and I'm excited, it is exciting. We put our youngest daughter in Truska as a school of choice back in 2004, 2005 and introduced the core knowledge program with Spanish. We now have our fifth offspring over at Truska. She's a little kindergartner, she's around our house talking in Spanish. It's just so cute to hear her speak in Spanish. And I can tell you, from 40 years in the business world, I went on my way to try to hire people who had dual languages, they're just invaluable to the business community and I'm glad to see these people recognized. I think it'll be important to businesses to see that seal on there. Congratulations, thank you.
We'll market it along those lines too.
Yeah.
And when your granddaughter makes $40,000 more, you can also thank us too. So are you okay?
Yeah, thank you Toni. Thank you. And somebody will remind me in April, those students will be here, so Wendy or Dr. Crespo when we do our agendas, you guys, okay, thank you. All right, that takes us to the end of discussion items, written reports. We have the monthly financial report, February 8, 2018 calendar of events and the Families Partnering in Education, which is formerly the Early Childhood Policy Council, written report. Anybody have any questions on those written reports while we have staff here? All right. Future agenda items still pending here are exceptional student services overview and audit committee. You're still working on a job description for audit committee, so those are still hanging on there and you know, I'm going to note on here just so I don't lose it, Wendy, the resolution honoring teachers or whatever, I don't know.
Supporting teachers.
Yeah, supporting, that's a better word, thank you. Anything else for future agenda items that... Yes, Mark?
I'd like to look at a discussion item for like step two and possibly even step three for talking about the bell start times and the children's sleep. So coordinating with Cherry Creek on some of the other things that they did as a district besides just moving the schedule.
Sorry, I'm running out of space on my...
Do you need a second?
No, no, not just to bring it forward as a future. I can be the second and I'm writing it down, so we're good. Have you shared, did you guys have any written information from that?
It's all on their website.
On Cherry Creek's website? So if we look at Cherry Creek's website, then we can kind of know what you're talking about to when we set it up for discussion?
There's a lot of it there on the website, but there were a couple of notes that I thought were a little bit, we got more out of the workshop than we got out of, than I saw in the notes. And so it'd be good to discuss that.
Okay, all right.
Maybe a guest speaker or two.
Okay. All right. I think that's it then. To housekeeping, Wendy, you're going to, Wendy is going to send us email so that we can pick our dinner for tomorrow night, 4 to 8 p.m. Are we here?
In 1:32.
We're in 1:32. We're scheduled, tomorrow night, we're scheduled from 4 to 8. I know, it snuck up on me too. We're scheduled from 4 to 8, we may not go to 8. There's an agenda up, it's, it looks, the first section is around the policies, some policies that are board policies and I've listed them all because they're the ones that I've pulled out that I think pertain to what we're talking, what we were talking about. Not that we're going to rewrite those policies or that we're going to necessarily update them, but they're, they're more of just reference to start the conversation. So don't panic when you look at that agenda and see there's 15 policies that I've listed on there. It's not that kind of thing. So we'll do that tomorrow and Wendy will send us menus to pick our dinner choices. And so we will go forward with the third Thursday from 4 to 8 from here on in, so the third Thursday of February, whatever that is, will be the next one. And I think we pretty much, I mentioned to a couple board members and to Dr. Shear that I think we'll pretty much talk about budgety sort of things in February for that workshop, budgety and numbers. Dr. Shear?
Just a final thing, I apologize for not being here earlier. We had quite a long session today in terms of a mediation settlement. And I don't know if this was mentioned or not, but I wanted to take the opportunity to thank Matt Troop for all of his work, both from a, just a practical point of view, the work that he's done and from an emotional point of view, having somebody on your staff that you have a lot of trust for, somebody that brings to the, I've been talking all day, by the way, that comes with a kind of interest, even when he had to learn some things in a really tough time. We lost an incredible leader in Dan and Matt stepped up at a time when we needed that. And I'm most appreciative of that. I'm most appreciative of the knowledge and the technical skills, but I'm also appreciative of the way he pulled together an operations unit that quite frankly needed some leadership from days past and I think is a, is a group of people now that feel much better about coming to work, being a part of the organization and being proud of being in Thompson. And I think his leadership certainly has contributed to that in a significant way because of his, not only his head, but also his heart. And I just want to take this opportunity to make sure we recognize him and Godspeed, my friend. You're one of those special people in my life and you're a good person, so thank you.
Yes, thank you, Matt. You're going to colder climates, right? Minnesota? Minnesota.
Minnesota.
To which, which school district up there?
St. Paul Public.
St. Paul. I have relatives that have kids in St. Paul Public School, so I'll tell them to watch out for you. So, thank you. Good luck.
You'll be eastern Mississippi.
Depend, yeah.
That's right.
Well, you're right on it.
No, but St. Paul's eastern.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right, it's dividing.
All right, I think we're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.